Good morning. It is June 17, 2022 at 8:00 AM in the morning, and I call this special called meeting to order. Councilman Secundor, can you lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So normally in the special called meeting, we don't have public comment, but there was a scribbler's error, so we will have public comment now, but we will have the public hearing to talk about millage rate and all that. But if you'd like to give a public comment now in lieu of the public hearing, feel free to turn in a card to Sharon or come up and you can give the card to Sharon afterwards. Otherwise, we will proceed to the public hearing. All right, seeing no public comment, I, Sharon, we are ready for the public hearing.
This is the public hearing for establishing the 2022 millage rate presented by Jay Venicki.
Good. Try it again. Good morning, Mayor and Council. It is eight oh something right now. We're bright eyed and bushy tailed, and this is the first of three required public hearings on the budget and millage rate for this year. I've actually lost count of the number of informal updates and town halls we've had on this already. I think that I commend the council for going above and beyond what was required. The series of town halls in May, just to kind of start the conversation on this, along with discussing it at the retreat back in February, has actually made it for a full level of input from the council and feedback from citizens. So applaud yourself on that, but on right now, we're doing something that is required by state law. And as a person that happened to be working for the state when this law was written, it seemed really good from that side of the fence. On this side, it seems rather onerous. What happened was about 20 years ago, the state required something in the taxpayer bill of rights that said, if a city, county, or school system does not roll back its millage rate to make all revenue increases neutral, it then has to advertise that it is a tax increase, even if the rate itself does not change. Now, part of this stemmed from, I will say background, smaller jurisdictions in rural parts of Georgia where tax assessments would jump up higher, but it also happens internally within the Atlanta area. So part of it was more full disclosure on that. It did not stop any cities, counties, or school systems from changing the rate. It just changes the advertising requirements and requires the city, in this case us, to have three separate public hearings on the rate. So this is the first of the three required ones. The other two will be on July 11, one at 8:00 AM and one at 6:00 PM. The 6:00 PM will also be tied to the actual vote of the millage rate. Now, what has happened this year is Dunwoody, which has had the same nominal rate of 2.74 mils for since its inception, is suggesting and is advertised to raise it to 3.04, which is the cap that was put into the city charter and city code by its original founders. So from the beginning of the city, it said, even without voter approval, the council is authorized to go up to 3.04. Over the past few years, the city has started to look at capital planning, has started to create a five-year CIP, and has started to look at operating budget forecast. And it started to realize that the revenue system created at the beginning of the city's inception does not match the service delivery that's happening and demanded by the citizens currently. Now, to give some, as I call it with our one reporter from the prior in the room, the amount that this increase would be for your typical $500,000 home would be a $57 a year increase. That's what this boils down to. Also, remember that all homesteaded properties, in other words, citizens of Dunwoody that qualified, which I think were at 90 or 95% qualification, their property values for assessments on city taxes are frozen. So in other words, if your house goes from 500 to 550, you would still be taxed only at the $500,000 level. So any person that's been here since inception of the city has paid the exact same dollar amount per year for over a decade. It's hard to really kind of pin that because the average number doesn't work, but we used in this example, a $500,000 house that's frozen at 3.75. Their increase would be $42 a year. So that's what this entire increase is talking about. It's changing the amount of that. It's moving the needle just slightly. Now, the most obvious question that's being asked is if the city is financially healthy, which it is, why does it need a tax increase? And it really boils down to this. Our biggest indicator of health is our fund balance, our undesignated reserves. And the city has almost twice the minimum recommended for our size, but current ongoing revenues don't match current ongoing expenditures. And that's something that as we start to look at a bond issuance, the rating agencies will look at as, okay, you are healthy, but this. Here's the math involved in this. Here are three separate budgets shown here. And the first one on the left is the original budget as it was passed last year in October. The middle one, I'll go through the details top to bottom after I go through left to right. The middle one is the budget if 2.74 mils was passed, and the one on the right is if 3.04 mils was passed. In all cases, we have the starting fund balance of the city as 22.5 million. This is undesignated reserves. It shows the tax level going up from 19.7 to 20.6 at 2.74. That is digest growth. That digest growth is solely from new construction, commercial revaluation, and churn on residential houses. So in other words, if person H sells to person B, it's reset at the new level. The one on the far right shows 21.7 as the amount. So basically, you get just at about $1 million of new revenue on increasing from 2.74 to 3.04. We've also adjusted the other revenue to match what we will propose at the mid-year change in July. We probably, we always do things conservative and then can readjust for actual, so we'll gain in that. In that case, look at the very bottom on each one. It's called the structural deficit. When the city passed its budget originally last October, the structural deficit was 3.9 million. This was a known factor and was talked about throughout the budget process. When COVID happened was the first year where we started to do structural deficits. In 2020 and 2021, even though we budgeted a structural deficit with conservative revenues, revenues came in a little bit higher than projected. And then expenditures always come in at the 96, 97% range. No matter where you budget, it tends to gravitate towards that. So in that case, in both '20 and '21, the city did not use fund balance to do operations. So it was very interesting when we changed financial advisors this past year. They started to look at all of our CAFRs and our audited financial statements. It's like, oh, you don't use fund balance. I go, look at the budget. And when they looked at the budget, they go, oh, you budget didn't use. So it's one of those things that rating agencies will look at, our financial advisor, and I have talked about it. We've also gone through our new operating projection models. And it's one of the things that if we go for a bond issuance, all the people that will rate our bonds will be happy that we're looking at projecting and taking proactive steps. So in this case, what does going from 2.7 to 3.04 do? It's the bottom two numbers, bottom numbers in the center and the right. It changes the structural deficit. It cuts it in half from 2.2 to 1.1. That means ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures are getting closer together. $1.1 million gap, that's easy to manage throughout the year. This is the operating forecast with the 3.04. Now, to give everybody, this is something that from now on, the city will start putting in with every budget document and everything is an update of this. Now, all things on forecasts are conservative. They're almost pessimistic to some extent. But what we're doing is making sure it's a sensitivity analysis so that the mayor and council are fully informed of what the future holds. I think one of the best things this council started doing was doing the CIP, where what it said was, these are capital projects we can afford, and here are capital projects we can't. It gave you a great planning tool, and this is the next step, is starting to work in operating. Now, in a perfect world, in a few years, the city hopes that the reserves are above four months the entire time, and we will adjust this every time we redo a budget. But in general, red and black are revenue expenditures. It's in the reverse order. We'd like it. We'd like revenues above expenditures in each one here in each year. But green should be above blue. Green is what your fund balance is or projected to be, and blue is what is required. If you notice, this has them crossing paths in 2025. Again, like I said, in a year or two, we will, as I say, glide this like a plane in and improve it so that over the whole five years, green will be above blue. But for current things with the city and the way the economy is going currently, I think that three years is a good barometer for us. So as long as we know three years, we'll have no problems being above four months' reserve. This is the, as I call it, the six different houses. Some of them are frozen. The three top ones show a current house value, and then the column on the right shows the frozen value. So this is one where your mileage may vary. But in general, your change from here goes from $33 to a high of 69 in these six scenarios. And that is what this going from 2.74 to 3.04 is all about. Now, I'd like to get a little bit about the tax bill, just so everybody knows. If you get your bill, comes in the mail, that gray area is the school system. Most of it's the school. The city of Dunwoody's taxes count for about 4% or 5% of the typical residential bill. Even doing this barely moves the needle. It'll go from 4 point something to 4 point something else, 5 point something to 5 point something else. I would like to point out one thing on here that we're going to start discussing in the near term is the orange slice that disappears. The county passed by voter referendum a thing called the E-host, the equalization host, not the education one, and it changed the way host is distributed. It now goes to county funds only first, general and hospital fund. That's why in the slide on the left, you see practically no county taxes. You may not get any this year because they have enough sales tax to cover it that only goes to the county. The cities do not receive a share of the equalization host unless it overspills the county. And this is a discussion for another day, but I'd like to us begin the conversation of addressing how that equalization part, the part that should come to the cities, should be distributed. Now, this is looking at the digest. This is the core of the city. It goes up and down, up and down. The general trend is up. They do. We have commercial construction, and we also have commercial revaluation in sales of homes. But here's the thing that we, as a forecasting tool, can't rely on. 13 years of the city, three years, the digest went down, two years were flat, and one year was what I call anemic. So even though we projected basically 2% for this year and it came in at 6%, you could, between Lyndon Neighbors, the finance director, and myself, we could not stomach budgeting a 6%, even though we thought that might be on the possibility, because what we don't want to do is come in and have to cut it mid-year. And this just, a graph just shows that over the course of time, the commercial properties have started to take more of a lion's share of what the tax burden is. Your citizens here pay very little per home, per homesteaded property. And it stayed that way because of the freeze. The city has two main exemptions that almost all homeowners qualify for, and that's reduction of their rate. Even though we say it's 2.74, citizens here that have homesteaded properties will be taxed at a rate of 1.74. And to be honest, with the exception of the two cities in DeKalb that don't tax, they're new and they're, they don't actually have a property tax levied against it, we're the lowest in the area. Very good bargain for the homeowner there. But as we start to see, we've opened up Brook Run right at the, right at the beginning of COVID. We have a jewel of a park, and the operating cost of the city, as was designed by the original revenue source of 2.74, assumed a park's budget that would be $450,000. I mean, index for inflation, that's what it should be this year, according to the original study that proposed the city. The budget for parks is 3 million. We have programming. We have maintenance. We have activities, all the things. The grooving on the green, all the food truck Thursdays, all the things that we do as a city, were not contemplated in the original study. There are also things that the citizens want now, and that's the reason we got into the operating forecast. We're starting to look at what citizens want and what level of service they have, and have determined that, on the park side especially, but even on the police, Chief Grogan, if he had the officers under the original study, would only be authorized for about 20 now, only be authorized. The original study undervalued some of the services that citizens demanded and wanted. So what's the goal of this public hearing? It's to educate the public and comply with state laws. The goal of raising the millage from 2.74 to 3.04 is to make ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures get closer, start to manage it. Since the council is starting to do operating forecast, what it has in hand is a tool where it can start looking at the future. You're going to pass a budget, you're going to pass a millage rate this summer and a budget this fall that's going to look five years in the future when you pass it. With new parks on the horizon and residential tax bills frozen, the most direct action that the city can take is going from 2.74 to the statutory cap. And projections show that if we do this, we know that even with pay raises, and part of this is going to be talking about pay raises with police in it, all of that can be handled for at least the next three years, if not longer, but it gives the city a tool that. One other thing that'll be in the staff recommendation when you actually vote on this on the July hearing is even though it does raise about $1 million worth of revenue, we'd like to ask council to reserve about a quarter million dollars of that, maybe 2.75, for compensation adjustments to the police department that are still in development. The Public Safety Committee worked on that the other week. But the staff recommendation will say, even though we are increasing at 1 million, we'd like to reserve probably about 2.75 to handle raises effective July 1st going forward. And with that, presentation is finished.
Thank you. All right. I, excuse me, sorry. I will open the public hearing at this time unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is open, and we will hear from those against for 10 minutes, right, Sharon? Yes. So we'll have 10 minutes for those who are against. If you want to just come up one at a time, or you can line up however you want to do it. If you'd like to speak against the millage, against what you, the millage rate, or provide us with information, feel free to join us at the microphone. Oh, you can come on up, Mr. Venicki. I'm sorry. This is sort of like a line, you know, wait in line kind of situation, or jump up when someone finishes situation. And if you'll just intro- Mr. Venicki, before, just make sure you introduce yourself for the record, please.
It's not my first rodeo, ma'am.
Right, I know. Okay, just making sure.
Madam Mayor, Council, I appreciate your time today. I'm at a severe disadvantage. I get limited time, and the presentation before me had unlimited time, so I'm somewhat at a disadvantage. I have no slides that I can show you. I can take somewhat exception to a lot of those slides. I mean, Mr. Venicki speaks with fork and tongue many times and didn't give you the real facts. Our immediate neighbor to the north, Peachtree Corners, has zero property taxes, okay? He said we have the lowest around. That's not the case, okay? I have mixed emotions whether or not, well, I'm against the millage rate as proposed. I think you either ought to roll it back to 2.57, which would be revenue neutral for the year, or I think you ought to bite the bullet and cover the deficit that's proposed on, in Mr. Venicki's slide. He's proposing, even with this, you'll still come away with $3.1 million deficit. So why don't you have the courage and step up and fix the stuff instead of going halfway? Okay, that's point number one. Point number two is, he says in his presentation that a 3% swing in revenue or expenses will fix the structural deficit, yet you're only proposing a revenue increase. How about biting the bullet and address expenses, okay? Expenses have gone skyrocketed, okay? Skyrocketed, skyrocketed. In the five-year presentation, expenses in 2017, general fund only, general fund only, were $21.2 million, okay? In 2022, they're $28.1 million, okay? That's a big swing. You need to address expenses. I get somewhat offended too when Mr. Venicki starts talking about, well, you only pay, you only pay. He doesn't pay anything, okay? He's a, he's a taker. I'm a giver. I pay property taxes. In addition to property taxes, I pay sales taxes. I pay insurance premium taxes. I pay franchise fees taxes. I pay alcohol taxes, okay? So you only, you look at the level I pay in property taxes, that's probably, it's only a little bit of what I pay in total in property taxes for being a citizen and resident of Dunwoody. Okay, Mr. Venicki talks about averages all the time. This is only an average. I get a little bit bummed out about that. The average median income in Dunwoody, okay, when you adjust the house sold down to two people, a primary breadwinner and a secondary breadwinner, the average annual income is under $60,000, okay, average. Well, if we average Mr. Venicki's salary down to average, he would have one gigantic pay decrease. So we don't talk about average. Let's average him down, okay? As opposed to averaging me up to pay more taxes. So, again, I think we, I think if you want to fix the structural deficit, fix it, okay? Otherwise, roll it back to the, to the level of last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Just some, like I said, this is kind of a wait in line situations. Go ahead, Mr. Weir.
My name is Rob Weir. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. I am opposed to the millage rate increase because I don't think you've made your case as to why you need it. I hear why you want it, but I don't know why you need it at this point in time. My, my reason for coming here today was this was the only date in time I could get here to comment on this, as obligations will preclude me coming at any other time. Similarly, I have not had any opportunities for town halls to hear some of the background on this. But the case that I, I see comes to me from the crier and the reporter, and everything I see deals with services you want to propose and do, expenses that you're taking on over and above what you budgeted for and you planned for. And to me, it's a case of, when you plan your work, then you work your plan. And if you screw up, you just don't do something until you've got the money to do it in a subsequent year. We've had a COVID hit that supposedly is part of the rationale for why we need to increase this millage rate. But, you know, whatever it is that happens, the biggest thing is you've got to plan for these things, have your reserves, and, and don't increase a millage rate arbitrarily. Only do it when the city is in decline and it's a last gasp measure to keep solvent before we go under. Don't do it because you want to raise services and you think this is a good way to do it. It's a, it's a case to me of the gotta do's versus the wanna do's. And the wanna do's are things like expanding park services and amenities, building multimillion-dollar ball fields and amphitheaters and building out parks. Just don't do it until you have the money. Control the expenses. I heard Chris Pike speak several years ago saying, if you're not careful, your ongoing expenses will exceed your revenues. It looks like we haven't been careful. If our ongoing expenses are increasing to the point where we can no longer afford them with the revenues we bring in. And that, to me, says the gotta's do's have to be done, and that should be first on the list. The wanna do's can be deferred. And before we raise the millage rate, serious talk should be given and vetted with the public in the newspapers so that the public can weigh in and say, yes, we agree that we either want to raise the millage rate or no, we don't. But this is a power you guys have to raise this millage rate, and I really caution you, please don't do it just arbitrarily because you had a couple of bad COVID years. And, and, and do smart things. I mean, I read in another section of the newspaper that with ARP money coming in, we're talking about spending a half million dollars on wayfinding signs that are wanna do things. We don't gotta do that. This entire millage rate increase is supposed to be $1 million worth of new revenue. You've got half of it right there if you don't do that one project. So, so these are the kinds of things I'm hoping my city is looking at in the smart mode of what used to be smart city, smart people. Let's do that. Thank you.
Sharon, how much time is left?
2.57 minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Frank Lockridge. I am a 30-plus-year resident of Dunwoody, and I live in Lake Bevokes subdivision. I am a retired engineer. My concern with the, with the increase is what you're going to do or what is planned in terms of projects. As Mr. Weir just announced, seems like some of them may not be necessary at this time, some of the expenditures. And I'm very concerned about what I'm seeing in terms of some of the actual traffic work that's going on and the benefits as a result of some of that, some of the traffic projects that I see that are going on and that are slowing down traffic through, through Dunwoody at this time. I'm also concerned about things such as the parks, the projections for parks, and just where we are right now on parks. So I ask that you, you look at the expenditures, and let's make sure that we really need to do this. All this effort for a million dollars, I don't know, seems like a lot of work for that. And are you doing it just because you can do it right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sharon, how much time is left?
A minute and a half.
A minute and a half for the against. If there's someone in here, I can't, I can only see here. All right, nobody, nobody. John, you don't see anybody on your side, Tom. Okay. All right, thank you. With that, we will have 10 minutes for, to talk, discuss for the potential millage rate increase.
Ironically, here is something for millage rate increase. If we have to do one, it makes sense to do it early. If we do it early and we nip things in the bud, it looks to me like in two years, you should then reduce the millage rate. If you would look at a millage rate increase with the expectation that you intend to make that go back to 2.74 as quickly as you possibly can, then it can account for one-time anomalies and get through a situation. But the essence of this is, this millage rate, once enacted, will probably never go back down. And that, to me, is a tax increase, and that, that's not what we're looking for. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak about the tax, the millage, potential millage rate?
Good morning. My name is Sue Ellis. I live here in Dunwoody. Have for 35 years. I am wholeheartedly in, in favor of this proposal. And looking at the financials, I think it would be irresponsible to do otherwise. So thank you very much for taking this up, and I'm very much in favor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the tax, the millage rate? Or seeing none, I close the public hearing. And now we will have questions and comments from council. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Jay, go ahead, Catherine.
Jay, I only had one comment from a constituent. It was also a commercial owner, and obviously, this will disproportionately affect them. And I'm wondering if you've had any feedback from commercial establishments.
Other than your comment, the one constituent that was passed on, that's the only one we've got on it. I will have to say, it goes back to the millage rate that's actually levied by the city on commercial properties, 2.74, compared to some of the other places around here are super low. They also have, I'll say this, commercial properties are more aggressive in the appeal of their value. So even though they aren't frozen, it tends to be the one where bigger buildings, the bigger commercial properties are, tends to be more aggressive. Some homeowners will, it's a $25,000 increase. It's not worth going back and forth. And again, even if they're taxed at 3.04, it will be very much one of the lowest around here. And to clarify, one of the things, Peachtree Corners, which is in Winnet County, is one of those cities I mentioned, that there are certain ones that levy no tax, no property tax. They walk off of franchise fees, and they're all the smaller ones, which I call very big homeowners associations, which grew into cities basically.
Thank you. Anybody, John?
Thank you, Mr. Venicki, for your presentation. You mentioned a possible pay increase for police. At what point would you expect that to go to the Budget Committee and already come from, in front of full council?
We are currently going to bring something to the July 11 meeting because we did the original one, the original talk last Friday.
We are currently, uh, going to bring something to the July 11th meeting because we did the original one, uh, the original talk last Friday in, in the public safety committee. And currently, right now, that we're working on one that will be, uh, probably implemented in August. And you'll have to excuse us as we're switching our payroll system so that, put a pay increase will take a little bit. However, whatever is approved by council in the end, we want to push back retro to July 1st. So basically, the first pay period that starts after July 1st, technically.
But it'll come in front of council at some point or another before we approve or vote on a, uh, mileage increase.
It will be on the same day.
Same day. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Tom, sorry.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Jay, could you give a little bit more, um, I guess clarification on the Peachtree Corners example, for example, that, so in Gwinnett, they, they have a splosh, and we have the host here. So in DeKalb, the host is used as a discount or, or, uh, to the taxpayers and in Gwinnett, that splosh is distributed to, to the cities as, as a mechanism of funding.
Yeah, the, um, one of the things that all of us that work in city and county governments, when we call each other, what are you doing? What are, what's, what's happening? Our worst apples to apples ever is when we cross a county line. And a lot of it has to do with the way sales tax is used. And in the case of Peachtree Corners, it, it, Gwinnett is part of the factor. Part of the other factor is what services it offers. Gwinnett County provides a great deal of the services for Peachtree Corners. And it was designed to basically use franchise fees and other smaller taxes instead of property taxes. Tucker, it, which is in DeKalb, I'm not sure, but I think they might be levying a property tax now. For a long time, what happened was in your resident of Tucker, you received no property tax bill from the city. However, you still got charged the county police and the county public works. The citizens in Dunwoody are not charged the county's police and public works because they took over the services, and that's part of the mileage rate. So apples to apples comparison is really problematic and especially crossing county lines. For us in DeKalb, we have one penny which goes towards education splosh, education construction. We have one that goes to splosh countywide, which is distributed on a population basis. And we use that primarily for transportation and some public safety. And then the, um, uh, the next penny is MARTA, which Fulton and DeKalb will always have this extra penny on there. Um, and I'm missing, what did I miss? Oh, E host, the equalization host, which forgives your county tax bill, which is the one that I think we should be having a discussion when it's up for renewal next time, that we need to work on the distribution formula for that.
Okay, and just to clarify, again, you, and you, you mentioned it, um, Peachtree Corners does, does not provide their own police services. That, that's provided by Gwinnett County and police is roughly about 40% of our operating budget. So, so that's, that's a significant difference to, that's worth noting.
And I'm, I, on all things Gwinnett, I don't talk to them as much as I talk to the DeKalb city. So, but I'm almost positive Peachtree, all Peachtree police are Gwinnett PD.
No, they don't have their own police department. In Gwinnett, right, they're, they're Gwinnett. Yes, we actually just had a 911 incident, so I can confirm for sure. So I just, just the, not to, to beat the Peachtree Corners and the Tuckers and all that to pulp. Peachtree Corners, when they formed, they chose three services. I think they've added one. In Gwinnett County, their service delivery model is so incredibly different that even the old cities in Gwinnett have Gwinnett County parks, even if they have their own parks as well. And so almost everyone's large parks are managed by the county, not their local government. Gwinnett County has the distinction of having the largest cities in the state without their own police department. Just, just, I find it very interesting, actually. Um, and Tucker is forbidden from having their own police department in their, whatever, five or 10 years after, until they, after they formed it at the earliest. Okay, I wrote a note. So can you just put back up the chart one more time? About the, the one with the percentages of our bills? You know which one I'm talking about? Yes, this one. And then can you talk, have we ever, do we currently get anything from E host in Dunwoody?
At the current time, we do not, uh, the county-
Yes, it's disappeared. It's not on. It's black.
Ran out of money.
Right, right. Yes.
The equalization host, E, E, E host, which sometimes gets confused with the education one. Had it so that once all general fund and grady obligations are met, it is redistributed amongst all the cities and the counties incorporated on an equal basis. We have yet to hit a year where it did that. This might be the year, and it'll end up being the, I thought you were shaking.
No, 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 I'll tell you something.
The, this could be the year, we don't, we have an IGA between us and the county on how it's supposed to be distributed. But it'll be minimal back to us at this point. But the county has almost gotten to the point where sales tax is covering general fund and grady, unless the county subsequently increases its own general fund expenditures, and then it would never roll to the-
So grady was at, this is my question. So grady was at a DeKalb commission meeting recently, because I think they meet pretty often. And they need more money because they're having to pay nurses a lot more. So I guess that's my question. So if grady goes up, even if it, even if it, in this budget year, it started here and say that their expenses that come under E host are equal in theory, or maybe there's a tiny bit of extra E host. But now in the middle of the budget cycle, they raise, they have to raise grady. Then assume that this difference disappears, right?
The difference would actually increase because the denominator, the expenses for grady go up. And I have not looked at the county's digest increase. Um, and I can talk to Matt at grady today and see what they're doing on that.
Well, the county hasn't agreed to anything yet, so I don't think it matters. But I was just curious. So, so the E host, though, is offsetting people's property taxes, correct?
On the county bill.
On the county bill. Okay. All right. And the school system, the school board met yesterday, and only two board members voted to lower their mileage rate. So the mileage rate will stay the same for the school system, which is unfortunate. All right, um, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? All right. We will have another public comment, three minutes each, if anybody would like to speak. Seeing no one, I need, Eric, give me comments. No.
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Council comments? No. Jay, can you remind us when the next two hearings are, please?
The next required public hearings, the ones that comply with state law will be on July 11th at 8:00 AM and 1:00 at 6:00 PM where the vote will be taken.
Okay. All right, and if anybody's listening, a reminder, you can always email us, email us questions and comments at council-members@DunwoodyGA.gov. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. I'm no executive session.
Move to adjourn.
By Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor, say aye. The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.